Hey, Mr. Johnson.
I'm okay. Are you okay?
Guess I'm fine. I'm going to begin. Oh gee, he's got a tape now.
Yes.
We'll call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, August 7th, 2017, 6:30 PM, City Council Room. Our members of the council are present. Those include our city manager, Laura Dogan, and our club treasurer, James Johnson. The next item would be to approve the minutes of July 17th, 2017.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of 17 July, 2017.
Motion made. Is there a second to the motion?
No second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the minutes. Then hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. The next would be to approve the August 1st, 2017 special meeting minutes. Have an entertaining motion.
Some.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
No second.
Made and seconded. Discussion on these minutes. Then hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Oh, abstaining. I wasn't here.
Okay, the next item is comments by members of the public. Yes.
I just wanted to express my deep sadness that Newport City Parks and Recreation will no longer be able to offer vacation camps as a part of their programming. I received an email today from Jessica as a person who has availed themselves of these camps. And it says that as the city reorients our department towards maintenance goals, families can expect to see a reduction in the number of programs and events hosted by Parks and Rec, including the discontinuation of our school vacation program camp this winter. So, yeah, that was a really wonderful, wonderful service for this community that has a severe lack of childcare. So it was a really wonderful thing for children to be able to spend time at Parks and Rec camps doing fun and enriching things while their parents are working during school vacations.
Other comments from anyone? Yes.
Procedure. Are we going to be allowed to address procedure at the time of the agenda item, or do we have to address it now?
Rules of procedure?
I'm sorry, yes.
You mean item number four?
So we can address it then?
Yes, as is well. Any other comments? Yes.
I would like to know why the Newport Rec Department isn't offering this. Their programs are fabulous. I don't get to take advantage in the winter, but my grandsons, who live with us, have taken full advantage in the summer. They're wonderful programs. And I am shocked to hear that it's not going to be offered, and I'd like to know why. Why the City Council is not having this.
I don't believe that was a City Council decision. I think that the Rec Department has a budget. But what the City Council did do is emphasize facilities maintenance. So they are working towards facility maintenance. The other aspect is there were actually, I know that they're good programs. I agree with you completely, Jess. And the Rec Department does a fabulous job. The bulk of the people who took advantage of that were actually not Newport City residents. So we had to start to think about using our resources in a way that is wise, frankly. The other, the other very delicate aspect that we've come across is that sometimes these summer camp programs are regarded as competition for the daycares that are in existence and making a living off of that. So we've been, we've been weighing out the numbers for two years and finally made the decision that the output of what these programs require is not worth a benefit back. So it's a tough decision, but we have to make up a.
I would like to address that. My, of course, we are residents and have been salt for probably three or four generations. But my two grandsons are not residents, but I pay for their participation in these programs. In fact, our grandson Ian, who is nine, will be partaking in a sailing program this coming weekend. And we paid, I paid $60 for him to take part in it. So they may not be residents, but people are paying for these programs. And how you could put, or they could put, maintenance in front of children is beyond belief.
Not all residents pay the full amount. Not all people who participate.
Why not? I mean, I pay the full amount.
Because there's a sliding scale of that.
Well, then that's fine. If there's a sliding scale, they still pay.
I'm picking up on the same issue. I think the piece that is really disturbing to me, one of the conditions that sort of voted in the extremely large budget this year was because the concern was if we didn't agree to the budget, the Rec Department would get cut. Well, what I'm hearing suggests that the Rec Department is getting cut anyway, and that's really disturbing. Because the extremely large budget did get approved. Can you address that, please, and not just sit there?
The city manager did address. Jessica evaluated the program. She, we left it up to the Rec Director.
I really have, I can't offer anything.
No, but we left it up to the Recreation Director to evaluate the program. We don't micromanage each department. And we left it up to her to evaluate. And she, it was her decision with the city manager. The past council did say that we had to have a focus on maintenance with the Rec facilities because it had been lacking for too many years. And then there's only so much money. And so, but we left it up to the department head. And that's what their job is, is to evaluate their programs. You know, between the city manager and the department heads. We let them evaluate the programs and make the decision.
But that budget was approved, and unfortunately, we all heard you threaten to remove the Rec Department because the budget wasn't approved. So I'm just raising that as a question.
I didn't threaten.
Yes, you did.
No, no, it wasn't a threat. It was just a comment that I made that.
It was a comment with teeth. Whether you recognize that or not. It brought a lot of people in here who came to the defense.
We have a budget.
Right.
Budget passed by the voters, and there's only so much in each department. And that is what the Rec Department has decided within their department. Other departments had to make cuts also. And so.
And where will their additional money now go?
There was no additional money. They are staying within their means. Am I correct? They have so much money, and they've decided that they had to make some changes. And it's up to them to decide what changes they have to make.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask, could you, they've got that email there. Could I see it for a second?
Of course.
It's good that you've got one. When I sat on the council, I didn't know anything about it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
A lot of us got emails.
This was like, wow, didn't know anything about this. So, but you get an email.
Because I think it was sent to all parents who had ever.
Okay.
You would have used it. But this is not vacation camp program.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes.
I came in quite a while back. I haven't heard anything yet from the city or anything on what's going to be done about Main Street down here from Mr. Goldberg.
It's nothing we can discuss. It's all in his hands. That's all we can say. It's in the receiver's shift's hands. We have no say. He is in charge of that property. We don't have a say right now.
Well, I guess, I'm trying to find out is, a while back, there was an article in the paper where he said that the judge from Florida said he could put that up for sale.
Actually, it wasn't determined until about two months ago that the receiver even had control. That was part of that whole deal with Mr. Querios, who actually still controlled it until just about, I think that hit the news a couple, was it two months ago, Laura? It was about two months ago that it hit the news that that was all part of the dealing. They were trying to get it from Mr. Querios. Because he actually controlled it, where I thought, everyone thought the receiver had true control, but when they got to looking at it, because.
Yeah, it is.
Because EB5 monies have not been used.
Right.
That they could trace to that property.
Right.
Mr. Querios technically still controlled it, but now he's turned it over on, you know, I'm just basing with the articles that he has on the news.
Turned it over to the receiver. Does anybody on the council have any objections? If anybody went up and rattled his cage? I mean, I think it's gone along, he's, he's played, as far as I'm concerned, he's played head games.
No, he's not.
Yes, he is.
No. He has to.
If that money wasn't bought with EB5 money, there is no reason why he can't put that property up for sale. No reason whatsoever. Either put it up for sale or did it over to Newport. He's playing head games. He did with Jay, but he screwed him over, sitting in my office, but he messed him up. I'm paying taxes up there on stuff that Jay owns. He refused to do it. And yet he stands there, says he's got 150 or 170 million dollars set in there. Probably fooling around. He's janking city.
I don't want to argue about it, but the money that, 150, 200 million, is actually going to pay local contractors.
Right. I have no problem with that.
And that's what it's geared for.
But the article that you got in the paper from him, the federal judge said he could put that property up for sale because it was not bought with EB5 money. He's dragging his butt up there, enough is enough. If nobody has any objection around the council, whether it's me or anybody else, should go up there and go and rattle his cage.
It's a free country. As far as, I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything that, you know.
I'm asking if anybody on the council thinks that maybe we should back off just a hair, or maybe they don't have objections to somebody doing it. If something is in the works, fine. But if you don't, then maybe, I know a few that go up with him, go and rattle his cage a little bit. I mean, it's ridiculous. Newport always seems to take a backseat to this stuff, and enough is enough. So if anybody's got any objections, I will follow what you people think.
I'll back up what the mayor said. It's free country. Watch out for the moose going up the hill.
He's steadily in Florida.
If some of us go up there, I mean, we're going to go up there and grab him and cuss him around, or holler, spurs at him. Because I realize the ramifications for Newport. All right, I mean, he's just, he's stalling, and enough is enough.
Okay. Yes.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I want to tell you that I came to the council about the Newberry Building. And I got no support from the council, and I did it on my own, and it was a success. If you've been by the Newberry Building, with the exception of maybe two people on the council, I haven't even received a thank, thanks. But it worked. It worked, so go ahead and do it.
Thank you.
Yay.
Okay. Anything else, then we'll.
Are there any updates on the consulting firm that was hired to look at the development opportunities for Main Street?
So the consultant has been staying steady on that particular project, and I expect that they'll be making a report to the council in the fall. And that's probably going to come just prior to when the Vermont Council on Rural Development does their community visioning. So we hope that the two projects will sort of lead into one another. So when that report is available, I think it'll be interesting for the community to digest.
Okay, anything else, then move on. The next item is, number four is rules of procedure. And at the last meeting, our person, Raboan, brought forward some recommendations, and we're going to have it reviewed by the city attorney. And the city attorney basically, well, there were some changes. He took out mission statement and took out a couple of other things. But he basically said that the best way to proceed would be with what was presented to the council as far as procedure. The one thing that we, I know, discussed with him for a while was the availability of material to the public. And basically, he, we chatted and thought that providing it Monday morning would be a good route to go. Having available Monday morning for the public of the meeting. Because that way, it gives council members time to review it.
Is that online only, or hard copies too?
Hard copies downstairs.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you had a chance to read the Newport Daily today, but there's a really interesting article published this morning. I think I have enough, one, two, three, four.
I've read.
So it's, it's interesting that the Deputy Secretary of State, Chris Winters, is quoted in this article, suggests that it's best practice to provide the material in advance. And thank you for the concession to do it Monday morning. But as I've been digging around across the state in the past few weeks since our last meeting, it seems like it's pretty commonplace for municipalities to share their information. In St. Albans, I have a quote from the mayor that said, "We do have a practice that's been in play for at least the past several years. We publish, publish the agenda and provide the city council packets upon request. We do have a standing request from the media for advanced packets." In Stowe, they have their whole entire council packet online. A councilperson in Montpelier said, "You don't post your council packets online so the public can see them well in advance of the meeting? That is crazy. Why would you not want the public to know well in advance what will be discussed? That's so opposed to the spirit of democracy." And I totally understand wanting to be conservative and make sure that we don't get ourselves into any legal trouble, but the Vermont League of Cities and Towns' boilerplate language doesn't sound like the Secretary of State's office is in favor of that.
Of what?
Of the language that is in our model policy. Or your policy, I'm sorry.
Well, it's, which language? I haven't seen this article. I've not seen the papers. It's the first time I've seen this.
On the, on page five of the paper, the second page of the council procedures article, said that best practice is to post everything that is public, even though it's not required by law. Refusal to make the materials available before the meeting based on not wanting board members to get questions about it is not a legitimate reason for denying public access to a public record under the Public Records Act.
So the rules of procedure don't address having material be available at any particular time? The rules of procedure are just the procedure of the meeting? So it's a separate conversation?
There's an agenda section in the rules, which is where I could suggest that the nonconfidential documents be posted online with the agenda. And it turns out that many municipalities consider the agenda to be the meeting packet, not just the cover page of the agenda. I was unaware of that.
So the agenda is the packet?
That's the opinion of many municipalities, yes.
So how does that translate into practice? If the agenda is the packet? Because that's what we do. I mean, we distribute an agenda. Is that?
To the public.
Right. That's what we do. So I guess, I guess I need a little better understanding about how that differs from what we already do?
What I'm saying is that other municipalities, when they say agenda, they mean the agenda plus all of the supporting documents that will be discussed at that meeting. Anything that's not confidential.
All right. So this says an agenda, which we do, and my understanding is that it's up to a municipality's discretion about when and how they would like their practice to distribute the materials that are not confidential. I think that's what the mayor may be asking, is, you know, a discussion on whether or not it should be posted, and if so, how much notice before the actual meeting. And my impression is that there's a certain respect and consideration for the council's deliberation and ability to deliberate with advanced thought, particularly if you are contacted, that you have some context in order to be able to respond. And what the precedent that we have in the city for consideration is that the Planning Commission and the DRB post materials in the office prior to the meeting. So when we got the public records request on Friday from Ed, first of all, the material wasn't available when he asked for it. And we have three days to be able to produce the material. So we are going to produce it for Ed this morning and still be well within the guidelines. If the council would like to make a policy decision about when nonconfidential materials would be available, I think, I think it's up to you to decide whether or not you want to have first look at it. And then it's posted either the day of the meeting or morning at 8 o'clock, people could come into the office. And we're looking for a compromise to respect your ability to deliberate. And that's what this is really about, is preserving your rights and your responsibilities as council members. So I guess you have some options. But in terms of the rules of procedure, the law says agenda. Whether or not the council decides to produce other materials, that's discretionary. So that's not part of the law. That's the distinction.
I understand. And I, in the article, the quote from the Deputy Secretary of State says that best practice is to post everything that is public, even though it is not required by law. I know you're meeting the standard. We're meeting the standard of the law, but I'm asking that we be more transparent and go beyond the letter of the law and act in good faith, that people are going to want to see the supporting materials before the meeting, just like the rest of us. I don't see, I don't see the agenda before the public does.
You see the agenda is hand-delivered to you, and then.
Yes, but it's already posted online. And that's fine with me. I really don't care that the public sees the agenda and the documents before I do. That, to me, is a non-issue.
You guys got to discuss it yourselves.
St. Albans, does it provide anything other than the council and the press?
Anybody who requests.
Yeah.
It's just an example of how other municipalities do it.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm just saying, St. Albans doesn't do it.
Upon request, they do.
Where?
We do have a standing request, oh, sorry. We publish the agenda and provide the city council packets upon request.
City council?
The city council packets.
No.
That means the packet.
Oh, and they provide.
See, a public records request would do the same thing. And that's what Ed exercised.
Why would the public need to plan a public records request to see the materials for the council meeting?
Because it's saying upon request.
Because, so, so there's no, there's, you all noticed there's no mention of packets or anything that could be interpreted as packets in this document. The, the providing of the supporting information beforehand is, is, is out of deference to us as a policy because we wouldn't be a functional board without it. The, I think we've, we've gotten entirely off track of what this document is as a legal document of all that is necessary and sufficient for legal, for sort of legal stipulations. And I feel like we should, we, the side, the conversations we've been having have been in entirely different directions and often not concerning your proposed amendments. But that your proposed amendments are in fact good practice policy suggestions, but that should not, are not a question of locking in for all time in, in formal procedure. This comes up in churches, actually, all the time. What is down as your legal basis for, for operations should really be as minimal and as simple as conceivably possible. There's no mention of packets. There's no mention demanding that we even get to hear this information, but we, as members of the public, like all others, the, the city, city of, or the, the city employees out of deference, sort through information that is already publicly available and provide us, to us in this comfortable packet. It really, it's, it's almost a favor to them because we can have the agenda, and then we demand all this information right now, and they have to go scurrying for it. But it's, it makes sense as a, as a, as a policy, it does make sense as a policy to have all of this available the day of, but not to demand that because we don't know what circumstances come up in the future. To make, to, to have it be a policy going forward, but amending a legal document.
What? What?
We, unfortunate, excuse me. Unfortunately, we have confused a best practice, like, a best practice conversation with a legal conversation. And it's been incredibly frustrating because this is three meetings of this, of this, of this conflict. And as of yet, there has been no, there has been no resolution proposed.
Mr. Mayor.
So this is our conversation.
Mr. Shenet is next.
I think that providing the public information for the topics on Monday morning on the website is a very good compromise. People are going to get it, and those who want to come in and get a hard copy, can go right downstairs, and I'm sure Mr. Johnson will be very happy to put one up if they need a hard copy.
Sounds like an excellent policy.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. It seems that the rules of procedure were just ratified in January. I'm kind of with James here, wondering why we are addressing this at this juncture in time. We're nowhere near the year anniversary of adopting new rules.
In January?
Yeah.
No, the only thing that was adopted in January was to allow discussion before any vote by, who's that in the audience?
24th, December?
This is more in depth. This is a more in-depth rules of procedure for council meetings. But into January, it was voted on, Mr. Wilson, you were here, to allow public participation before every vote. That is the.
Before the vote.
Before the vote. But that is only what was voted on. We did not vote on this entire document. This is something that I strongly feel we should have for the council. It's guidance for not only the current council, but future councils. It has nothing to do with the policy aspect that, that it's gotten muddied there. And so that is why this is being proposed at this time. And I just, with some of the few meetings, I've, well, actually, as far as the council goes, and as far as the running of the meetings, per the charter, the state statute, and Robert Drews, I'm the moderator of this meeting. And I can even set, I can even set what will happen at the meeting as far as public participation, the way the meeting is run, time limits, and so forth. The section nine of the city charter gives me that authority, and also state statute, the open, open meeting law, state statute, Robert's rules. Because I am considered the moderator of this meeting. And we also have to remember, as I've stated before numerous times, this is a meeting of the council, for the council, to conduct city business, which is clearly stated. And if you go to any other municipality, they allow a public comment in the beginning, and that's it. Some of them don't even allow comments before votes because they know it is their meeting. You allow the public to have input at the beginning of the meeting. Some actually have it at the end, but generally, I think it's best to have it at the beginning. That way, you know. But that is why I felt strongly that we should implement this, just so that we have control.
We elected you.
Do what you got to do.
But with respect, Mr. Mayor, is, is this? With respect, Mr. Mayor, is this not currently a policy? Or is this not currently a legal document under which?
No.
In what way does it differ than the rules and procedures? I don't know if I ever saw what this was altering exactly.
This is putting in paper the rules of public meeting law. This is basically taking Title I and reducing it to an actual policy. So remember, the first version was... This is from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And that's a municipal resource for all municipalities who are members. And they came up with a draft. We presented that. Mr. Shinet had a couple of suggestions. We had those checked out. And those suggestions were confirmed by the city attorney to be the law. And then Ms. Royne had some suggestions, and we vetted those of the attorney as well. And he recommended applying this particular version.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring the two-meetings-ago packet, which had references to what I thought was the same document being accepted both earlier this year and something like two years ago. And I'm sorry, I wasn't here. I didn't live here two years ago.
There was no document accepted. It was a motion that was made... I have the dates. Was it in December of 2015 and then again ratified by motion in January of 2017? Is that what your recollection is, Mr. Wilson?
For the vote.
For the vote on...
The council voted...
Two thousand fifteen.
It was this year.
Yeah, December of 2015 was the first vote. And then it was re-voted and confirmed, I think, in January of 2017.
What was?
That the community would be invited to comment before every vote.
But just a simple, like, policy of just that?
A motion was made, and that's been a procedure ever since. So there was no...
So this is a combination of boilerplate legalese from the state. And that particular motion put into boilerplate legalese to provide a basis upon which we can then adopt best practice policies. But this is a minimum legal coverage and operational basis. Am I correct there?
Almost. This is a template from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, which is not the state. Okay?
Excuse me, in the spirit of the state.
Yes, this is from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. We had it vetted by our city attorney to make sure that it was in alignment and meets based on the two questions that had come forward. And this captures the public meeting law. And it captures, I would say, Robert's Rules of Order and the things that the mayor listed. Talks about forum. I mean, you read it. But this basically delineates statute. And it puts it, as you said, in the bare minimum. But that's separate and apart from the motion that was made to allow public comment before a vote.
Okay. He says...
There.
No, you all said...
With respect, Mr. Mayor, there has not been a motion as yet.
Oh.
So I believe the spirit there is that we are effectively in a committee of the whole, which could be held behind closed doors. But it is appropriate, it is appropriate...
Absolutely not.
No, we can't. This is a public... This, this...
Closed doors.
Yeah, okay, let's start, sorry. I'm just... Just a second. Let's keep the comments in the audience, Sam. I'm trying to listen, you know, just...
That at present, because there is no motion on the floor, there is nothing, we are having a conversation as the duly-elected representatives of the city doing our job. We have this conversation in full public view and with full public hearing and recorded so that once we have come up with some sort of, with some motion, we then open that motion to public comment. As of right now, we are still discussing what we even wish to open up to public comment. So if that is the rule, and if there are no motion has been made, what is the basis for having public... What is the basis for commenting? If nothing has actually been said?
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order, though. I specifically asked whether or not I was going to be allowed to make comment because procedure was on the agenda. And you said yes, and therefore I didn't need to make it during the general comments. I am reserving my right now, since that's being denied me, to make my comments as I would make them during the general comments. I did not do it then. I waited till I thought it was going to be more relevant because you said I was going to make comment, I was going to be allowed to make comment. Now I'm being told if there's no motion on the floor, I would not be allowed to make comment. I reserve my right to make comment as I would have made at the beginning now.
Mr. Mayor, being a policy wonk myself, I totally get what Mr. Marion is saying, that in our rules, it says that in order to have public comment, a motion must be made and seconded. And I wonder, Mr. Marion, if you'd like to make that motion?
I would. I would like, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the rules and procedures as presented.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Now discussion, and I will go then.
First of all, I'd like to let you know a little bit about the history with respect to these rules of procedure. It used to be that it was rather informal, and we would be allowed to make a comment or ask a question at almost any time. And that worked out. Meetings were never long. They ended appropriately. Then a comment was made about the way some meetings were being held at a community commons meeting. And it was suggested that the public wasn't being treated politely, that we were being cut off, that people were being... One specific person was being rude to us. And after that commons meeting, almost immediately thereafter, we were told by the mayor that we were not going to be allowed to make comments or ask questions at any time during the meeting. We would be restricted to general comments at the beginning. And we explained for so many reasons why that was wrong. And finally, John Wilson made a motion that we would be allowed to make comments. But I think he just put in the words "before a vote" because it was what he was thinking at the time. And that became the basis for the rule in 2015. The article that was presented also suggested that the attorney, Assistant Deputy Secretary of State, said he thought that the public should be allowed to make comments after each item discussed, not after each time there might be a vote, but after each item discussed. So I would go back to suggesting that that would be best practice and that we include it. Number two, a 15-minute limit? I had never heard about a 15-minute limit. And I realized after reading this article, I had never even been shown these rules of procedure that you're now looking at. So I would like to have a copy of the rules of procedure so that I could see what we're talking about. And the public hasn't had a copy of those rules of procedure, which I find outrageous. And then I also recall in the Dark Ages, when almost every one of us would have been serfs, the way they kept us down at the time, and the reason they called it the Dark Ages is because no one would let the serfs have any knowledge. They didn't want to teach them how to read. They certainly didn't want to let them know what the news was. And that's a good way to keep people down. You've got a chance to have... And I came to Vermont because I thought this was an enlightened state in the best sense of the word. And that knowledge would be the key that each person would have so that they would be able to participate. And this is our only chance to really participate. We don't have town meeting. And the meeting we have the day before town meeting, all the issues have been addressed. They're already on the ballot. Nobody... The public doesn't even... I'm sorry, the press doesn't even come to those meetings. Go to the town meetings where decisions are being made. Nothing happens at our little meeting before a vote. So for all those reasons, and I do want to address the last comment in the Daily Express, which was the last comment of the city manager, which said that if you gave us some knowledge in advance, that would be a dangerous precedent.
I said that?
That's what the quote is. And I remember hearing it. I remember hearing it in this meeting, that it would be a dangerous precedent to set. And I can talk about giving us knowledge, giving the public knowledge, is not a dangerous precedent. Dangerous precedence or dangerousness is when a city manager suggests it would be dangerous for the public to have knowledge in advance of the meeting. And you know what? What's so precious about putting out the agenda on Friday at 4:00 PM? You could put out the agenda at 4:00 PM on Wednesday. And then...
I don't finalize the agenda till sometimes 1:00 on Friday. So the agenda is never ready Wednesday.
Well, the thing is that you can change all these rules, you can write all these rules, but you can simply change the rule as to when an agenda is ready. And you know, the public is very forgiving. If something had to be added to the agenda again on a Friday, we accept that because it was an emergency, you wanted to add something else. But you could set the agenda on Wednesday. This information package could be given to you on Wednesday. We could get it on Thursday.
Friday.
Friday. The point is that nothing is rigid, other than the rigidity with which you're making rules now that never existed before, that limit us to 15 minutes. The other thing that the Deputy Attorney General, Secretary of State, said was, "What's this stuff about what you're gonna do if we're not behaving somehow?" And it's totally within the discretion of the mayor. He said he wanted to know what that even meant. I'd like to see a copy of that email. Did you guys get that email from the Deputy Secretary of State?
No.
Okay. So I think there's a lot to be discussed about these rules and a lot that the public should be allowed to say about these rules once they have them in hand. This is the kind of thing that should be warned.
It has been warned three meetings, this thing.
No, but we didn't get a copy of it.
It's been warned. But I want to address a couple of things. First of all, town meeting. The voters voted to do away with the town meeting. That was not the council. I was actually opposed to it. I liked the old-fashioned town meeting where everyone gathered on a Monday night or a Tuesday. But the public got a petition, and the voters overwhelmingly voted to do away with town meeting and go with Australian ballot. So that is why the town meeting is no longer what people consider the old-fashioned Vermont town meeting. There was a group of voters that got a petition. They presented it to the council. We had to place it on the ballot. And the voters voted to do away with it. They wanted everything on Australian ballot, which, looking back at it, actually, you get a much better cross-section of people voting on large items, such as the budget, the school budgets, than at the old traditional town meeting. We used to only have maybe 80 to 100. Now we're getting 500, 300 to 500 voting. So it's a much better representation as far as when it's coming to the voting. Do I miss the town meeting? Yes, that I do. So that's where the town meeting went away. It wasn't because the council wanted to do it. The voters, a group of voters, got a petition, right? I think it was 5%, whatever it was.
Before my time.
Oh, before you, right before you came. Right, it was before John came. But that's how come town meeting is no longer. 15-minute, that I got... Actually, that, if you look at a lot of agendas for other municipalities, that is the timeframe they allow. They actually are much more detailed on their agendas. They put actual timelines, times, next to the items. School boards do it, and other municipalities do it. They actually put, okay, we're gonna have 10 minutes allotted for this discussion, 5 minutes for this discussion. They do that. We don't do that here on that aspect. And so I see a lot of hands. This young man over here, then Jennifer, and then this gentleman back who had his hand up for you.
Thank you. Fundamentally, there are two directions this conversation has been leading back and forth in. And one is of policy and what is necessary for the council to get through to have a smoothly run meeting. And how can we keep ourselves just legally, you know, just smooth and minimal with the legalese? And I totally understand that. And the conversation that seemingly the public, as well as some members of the city council, and even the higher levels of state government, the Deputy Secretary of State, wants to have this discussion of transparency and accountability and for public input to be present at every level of every government existence. Because that's what is necessary to have a government that is by and for the people. So that is what we, as a people, are demanding of this meeting. And it's up to you to deliberate on everything. But the more input we can have, the more you're going to know how to serve us. And how to serve us is your job. That's all I'd like to say.
Well, a couple of things, which is, I took some notes. And of course, I can't see my notes unless I put my glasses on. One thing is precedence, which I think Mr. Marion brought up, that you've got to be very careful. You've got things that, if you write them down and say, "It must happen this way," you cannot deviate from that. And I think the city of Newport has to be flexible and needs to be flexible. So number one, if you back up, rediscussion. Robert's Rules of Order, there has to be a motion on the floor before discussion is opened. Technically, the discussion that the council had just before the motion was made, all of that was illegal. Because technically, you shouldn't be discussing until there is a motion. Therefore, this whole thing of us as a public not being able to put input until there's a motion on the floor is totally legit. I don't see a problem with that. We are getting to make comments during the discussion period. Okay. Number two, the comment that... Well, I interpreted the comment, that our city manager said apropos of dangerous precedence on including items with the agenda package is the failure to include an item. And that is the problem you can get in. It's not what you include, but what by mistake is excluded because it isn't available at the time you put the agenda package out. On the suggestion we had from the floor, that the agenda come out on Wednesday and be amended Thursday and Friday. If I read it on Wednesday, and I sit there and say, "Oh, I don't have to show up. This is not a voted item. It has to be on the agenda, be voted." And then I find out Friday it gets added, I think I'd be a little upset. So I think you have one agenda. You have to wait to the last moment because that's flexibility the city has to have. And for those of you who don't know me, I did sit on the city council. So that's all I have to say.
I ought to introduce myself. I'm Jeff Edek. I'm from Newport Center and Glenmore, Pennsylvania. So I'm not... I don't have a dog in this fight. But what observing, I guess, one of the things reading the article is, I'd like to know, if I was a resident, who sent the email to the Deputy Secretary of State, since the council doesn't seem to know about it, when it was sent, when the response was sent by the Deputy Secretary of State, and what that response is. Because it's been interpreted by the paper, which may not be his email. Okay? So those are kind of four items I would want to hear. The other comments are that I observe no restriction on comments from the public. What I observe is people don't like some of the comments from the council, and they won't be quiet when they hear something they don't like. So, you know, it's one of these things. I understand what the council's trying to do is get to where there's an efficiently-run s... is get to where there's a efficiently-run civil meeting that's in the best interest of the city of Newport.
Thank you. Pam?
Yeah.
Ben, did you have something too? Okay, so I'm just, Diane will be after the call.
Let her go first, and then I'll go after.
Okay. I'm just trying to keep in my mind who I have.
Yeah, I totally understand why we went to Australian ballot as opposed to town meeting, so that more people could come and vote, because they couldn't take the time off work. That's appropriate. But what that has done is it has meant that there isn't a space for people to come and comment, for people to raise issues that are important to them. John Ward came to the last meeting, the night before the budget, the night before voting day, whatever, March the 7th, and how can I forget that date? He raised a lot of really important points. They fell into a great big void. Press was not here, any KTV was not here, because other towns were meeting that day and were having issues that they were voting on. So although that's the designated day, it doesn't mean anything, that we do need an opportunity, a place where we can raise issues or have comments. We don't have it. I am really concerned, Mr. Marion, that you are using church meeting boards as a policy basis for here. We have separation of church and state. We have it for a very good reason. So using either a school board or how a church meeting is run, I understand the frame that you're using, but it's not a useful comparison. We all, as we are voters, we have a right to have input. It's important that we do. It's not about disagreeing with you, it's about, we may have a different perspective. And sometimes that has been really helpful, and it's important that that not get lost.
And one little history also, I've been, I'm a walking historian, I guess, when it comes to some of this. We went to Australian ballot, the comment was, well, nobody came out Monday night to discuss the items. So we tried a Saturday, figuring people would be off on a Saturday. We had no more people show up than we did on a Monday night. So we did try to move the public hearing process to a Saturday, think we might get more public input.
But where people are interested, where is the space that they can comment? Where can they raise issues?
The beginning of, as I keep going back, the beginning of each meeting, there's 15 minutes to raise the issues.
Which basically means you have two minutes per person, and we get no comment unless we really demand interaction from you. Truly, we have to find...
I mean, 15 minutes is a guideline. And I, as the moderator, set time limits on the person's discussion, which I have, you know, let me, I gotta move on, but I have that lead, I put 15 minutes, but...
Absolutely.
Because there was one night, we did have a room full of people, and I did limit.
Yes, you did.
Because we had so many people, and so...
Other times you have allowed it, and I'm not minimizing that, but that really doesn't give somebody an opportunity in their allotted two minutes to be able to raise issues that are important. Just a second.
Okay. Nicole?
I'm just saying, they're saying that the timer, like you, we all go to the legislative breakfast, right? There's a timer right there, and a minute that, so there's a timer, because nobody could get to speak.
Nikki?
So I find that it's probably a good idea to have a timer.
I'm not arguing with it, I'm asking for a different place, a different format to be able to do that, or to be able to do it in the rest of the meeting.
Okay?
Yep.
I don't want this to sound wrong, but personally, I don't care about the secretary of state, I don't care about the state. This is Newport. Every one of you that's sitting on the council, I have total faith and respect in. You can limit a conversation on certain subjects to the way the person is talking. If the person is disrespectful, you cut him off. Plain and simple. So you people should set your own agenda, what you want for rules. I know there's some things that probably have to enter executive session. The public has no right out here to know what's going on on certain day. And I, again, I have respect and faith in everybody sitting at that table. You can judge that. So you do it. Never mind about the state or about the law, I don't think anybody's gonna jump on you for that. You people got the faith to know what you can run, and what you can let out, what you can't let out. I have no problem with that, Paul.
Diane, and after Diane, it's Ann Barbara.
I did get here late, so I don't know what's all you can discuss, but, you know, people, this is a city where we really need to encourage people to take part in local government. We're very apathetic here. People have a lot of problems, they feel like they can come out and discuss stuff, or they just have other stuff on their mind. It would be great and wonderful, regardless of rules, if you could just find it in your heart, to think about encouraging, making Newport a place where more people want to participate. And even if people don't come to the meetings, when people do come to the meetings, like the people that are here today, they bring up all kinds of good points. I've heard some really good points here, some of them I don't agree with, but they're good points. And I'd like to say, wow, well, that was interesting, I didn't look at it that way. And there's a man here taking notes, and there's a person here filming it, and these things will go in the press, and they'll be reported, and people will pick them up in the newspaper, and they're gonna read those comments and say, oh, yeah, I didn't look at it from that point of view. And that's a way you're gonna bring in people in Newport to get involved in these issues. And I think that's really important. And I think that no matter, you know, you can go by rules and rules and rules, but just look at it from a more, from the spirit of it and not the rule of it.
Yeah, my question is, regardless of if you vote on it tonight, or how you vote on it tonight, my question is, are you going to adopt Dennis Chenet's recommendation that the supporting documents are available Monday morning, both in hard copy here as well as online? Seeing how that's not in the procedure?
My private intention was to, I guess, that would be a new business item, to have the council instruct the town clerk treasurer to implement that procedure. Would that be the appropriate time for that?
Why not now?
Well, we're bound to our agenda. And new business is there specifically for council members to introduce additional things, particularly that have come up during the conversation of the meeting, like clear questions that need to be needed.
All right. So we have a motion, and we have a second, as far as the rules of procedure. Any other discussion?
But Julie moved to amend the rules last time to include this, and that was supposed to be part of these rules. That was the purpose for which a lawyer was employed, to see whether or not that was an appropriate modification of these rules.
He recommended that we keep...
At that meeting, Julie made the motion, I seconded it. And then after discussion, I pulled back the second, Julie pulled back her motion, and then we went with sending it to the lawyer. So that motion was pulled back, it's not on the table.
So this could be amended, these rules could be amended at this moment, include that.
Or at any time in the future.
So we do have a motion on the floor and a second.
Is the motion to adopt the rules, as the lawyers approve them?
Yes.
Which is the original document?
Yes.
That's what the motion is, not anything but an amended document, the original motion, the original document.
Okay, motion's made and seconded.
I would like to withdraw my second. Thank you for allowing that discussion, I appreciate it.
So now, are you withdrawing your motion?
I would like to maintain my motion and ask for a reinstating of second or a different second, so that we can...
So let's make this clear, you want to reissue the very same motion as presented earlier?
Yes.
I will second that motion. So a motion's made and seconded. Discussion, then, I think we've done that, okay? Can I, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. The motion is seconded, been discussed.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because...
We've already discussed the original motion.
We did, okay, and the same motion being put forward a second time, okay. Just want to make sure we're... Okay, then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Three ayes and one oppose. The motion carries. Moving on, the next item, budget status report.
I believe the, what we just voted on, there's, on the back page, is rules of signatures.
Correct.
You're correct.
Oh, we should sign, we should, sorry. I guess we just... Thank you. Everyone had a copy, just barely into the fiscal year, so there's probably nothing that's really standing out. Question, Mr. Chenet?
Just that the two topics that I keep bringing up regarding each of the budgets that we've had in the recent past still are not corrected, and I would love to see those corrected by the time we get the next one of these pension reports.
That would be page, pages three and four.
The totals do tally correctly, is that right?
Yes, everything totals correctly, it's just that they're not billed in each section. It's the subtotals, I'm sorry. Now, this comes directly from Nemrick?
Yeah.
Is that a bug in the Nemrick program?
I'm gonna get this to you, Jim.
Yeah.
What's happening is, if you look at the subtotals, right, you're correct, the subtotals aren't adding up correctly.
There's no subtotal for this section right here.
Oh, other income.
Right.
Okay, so there's no subtotal for other income on page three, right here. It just jumps right down.
And if you look at the one that Mr. Johnson has, Mr. Wilson, that'll show you where there should be a subtotal. And then the same thing under the city clerk, the city manager, there's no subtotal here where there should be, because you've got an entirely new section to mention here. So this should be duplicated over here.
Does it sound like a programming issue with Nemrick? Do you want to check what they do on that?
Maybe there's something to get checked.
Oh, okay.
The totals are correct, though, aren't they?
Yeah, total totals correct, it's the subtotals that are...
I'll look at that.
Okay.
I had two, two things that struck out to me. One of them was a small amount on page 13, on the rec programs, and we're one month into it, but we've already spent $220, and we plan nothing for the winter program. And it just kinda struck me as we're spending money on winter programs and it's still summer. But here's my main question, on page eight, on the police department. When we look at their income, we don't see, normally we hear the term, this one offsets the other one, but if we're a month into it, we've already, and I understand, we put zero in there for Operation Stone Garden and Dirk Tass Force grant, yet we've already spent $10,000. Now, normally that will be offset by income in the end, but if you look at it right now, it just kinda struck out like they should be offsetting in the balance, in the budget, not on expenses or $10,000.
Is that a...
I think that's reimbursable.
Is that reimbursable, so we have to spend it first?
The income isn't in there, because he doesn't know what the income is.
Yeah.
What the expense is.
Well...
But you can't inflate your income.
It looks like we've already spent this money in the actual...
Yeah, you're gonna get that back.
Yeah, but I was just saying that right now, if we look at the budget, I know in the end it'll all balance out when the audit gets it, but for right now, it's not...
I think the reason is not in there, because he didn't know how much he was gonna get.
Yeah.
You can't, you try not to guess at what we're gonna get.
Right, and he bills them quarterly?
Exactly.
Yeah. So every quarter you're gonna get...
Okay, so we'll watch it for the next two months and see, okay. That's all I have.
So there should be, so, yeah, there should be an offsetting entry coming in.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the budget before?
Can I mention, a little prematurely perhaps, but we went through the physical audit the last week of July, and early results, and this is the auditor's words, is that the audit was flawless. I'm really proud of that, because that's where the rubber meets the rim for the city. We did a lot of teamwork on that, and I'm very excited about that, and there'll be more presentations coming in the coming weeks.
You'll have that report when?
I would guess you're gonna have it in about a month and a half, because we've got some follow-up to do, some material that we need to submit, and then they have to write the report. So there'll be a copy for everybody, and that's usually, I want to say it's available in October, but it's for the past fiscal year, so that ends June 30th, 2017. Pretty psyched about that, I'm very proud of the treasurer's office.
The other thing is, we've gone ebbing them around for a full week, then the two and a half days. It's pretty good.
Okay. Anything else on the budget status? And we'll move on. Mr. Johnson, new business?
Yeah. Brian, you are Brian, right?
I'm Brian. Anything? Do you have anything to get on?
I've got a, a vendor's permit for, from Brian Schramm. He wants to set up a car at Gardner Park, do various events, and in the lot across the Commonwealth Farms. He's gonna be here year-round, like.
Sure.
You want to explain what you're...
I just want to sell some tacos, nothing dramatic, no problem. Here's a little picture of this place, forgive me, it's a brand-new endeavor. Bringing west coast street-style tacos to the northeast kingdom, nobody's ever done it. Doing this in stages, as you can see by the picture, my initial endeavor was in the Gardner Park on the 4th of July, with a booth. I moved it into my camper now, it was a tremendous hit. It was a success in October, October-ish, purchased a full-blown professional concession trucker camper. It's all self-contained, and I would like your permission, if that's okay. I've got my health permit here, the state will be there as well, actually.
You got the insurance?
Yes.
You paid the fee?
Yep.
We don't get it in any year-round operations, but...
Well, just so you know, my hope that in the wintertime is to send people to drive-thru taco truck. Nobody else to stand there and get a taco, so I have a spy built in, make it a drive-thru, so that's the goal.
Crossmont Farms? Crossmont Farms and also Gardner Park?
Yeah, I work out of lease with the guy that owns a lot of Crossmont Farms already this morning.
Okay.
And Gardner Park would be great, I have permissions, yeah.
So in the wintertime, you've got, you're taking care of all your own plow?
Absolutely.
But across from Compton Farms, does that push the Christmas tree guy out?
No, actually, I'll be working with him.
Oh, okay.
I want to share the lot with him.
Get a taco, buy a tree.
Tree and taco.
Get a tree, get a tree, get a taco.
No, I do work with him, I've already discussed that with the landowner.
So you need a formal motion, Mr. Johnson, and have us sign it, or just have you sign it? Just you have to sign it?
I sign it.
So we need a motion to authorize the city clerk to sign the vendor's permit?
So what, Mr.?
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded, any other discussion on that?
Great.
Great, I loved it, loved it. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Other new business, Mr. Johnson?
We don't, I'm signing that, yeah.
We don't, we haven't signed that yet.
No, I think we've...
No, we're going with the questions, okay?
No. I'm gonna dig your check today.
Mr. Wilson, new business?
I kinda hinted at this about a month ago, but now I'm gonna officially say that they've been up there for a month. They're a pair of sneakers on the wire right in front of Governor Proud E. N. Or apartments. Yeah, it sounds funny, but when you talk about wanting to beautify the city, that doesn't look very pretty. So it would be nice if we could get those cut down, like we did the ones on Third Street.
The those came down? Prospects, you came down?
They came down.
I thought they'd been replaced.
These have been up here for about a month, and I just can't stand looking at them.
I think last time we done, Profect Street is another pair of...
Yeah, I think we will find this to be a recurring problem.
Well, yes, but if you continue to let them do it, then we'll...
Keep going, kind of.
Just like you're feeding them, cutting them down.
Okay, that's all.
That's all you have?
Thank you all.
Thank you. New business?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to know how successful Kingdom Games was last weekend. It was amazing to see every campsite fall and so many people on the beach. I can't imagine what a boon it was to all the businesses around the beach and downtown. I didn't make it to Aquafest downtown because I was working at the beach, but it's really nice to see that kind of partnership between Kingdom Games and the city's facilities and how much it benefits all of us.
I know it wasn't between Kingdom Games and people visiting and another event.
Car show.
The car show. Between everything, there wasn't a hotel room. They actually had to send people to JP in St. Consbury, 'cause there wasn't a room available in the area. And so... Good. Anything else? I don't really, new business, Mr. Chenet?
Two things. First, I'd like to, the Green Mountain Farm School America volunteers who do so much work in schools in the community in a variety of capacities, and their kind of just great services to the community have all finished their term of service, and all six of them have moved on to other things. And there'll be more coming in, but I'd just like to give a thanks to all six of them for their ongoing work. I would also like to, as I mentioned earlier, make a motion to instruct the city clerk to make all of the publicly available materials and support, or to make the publicly available materials in support of the agenda available online and in the physical location downstairs on Monday mornings before, of council meetings, as we discussed earlier.
I would do that, but I need to get the information from the manager, 'cause I don't put them online. She puts out the information.
So should I amend that, should I amend that motion to instruct the city manager to make those things available?
Yeah, I'll put them on the shelf. I'll make copies of what's down there, but I don't, I don't have the information.
So I generate it, he'll have it available?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for that procedural information. I appreciate that.
So a motion's been made, is there a second?
Yes.
Made and seconded. Discussion. Then...
Is there a reason why they couldn't be available on Friday, so that we have at least a reasonable amount of time to read them, as opposed to Monday morning, where a lot of people have day jobs? Just curious.
Because we need to see it first. I'd like to be able to get my packet...
Other cities don't.
Well, I don't get my packet until 6:30 in the evening, and I do not wanna get a phone call at 1 o'clock in the afternoon by someone asking me something I have no knowledge about whatsoever. I wanna see that information first, whether it's available Saturday, Sunday, Monday, I don't care, but I think Monday is probably the best day. And that's what has been proposed, and that's... I think it's a good question. So a motion been made, seconded. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor? I do not wanna beat a dead horse, but I do wanna refer to a quote from the deputy secretary of state that's in the Newport Daily Express article, which in context was about not publishing the materials in advance of a meeting. And the quote is, "Refusal to make those materials available before the meeting based on not wanting board members to get questions about it is not a legitimate reason for denying public access to a public record under the Public Records Act."
In clarification, we are not denying public access prior to meeting. It's gonna be there Monday morning. That is prior to the meeting. We have suffice, I mean, we have procedures that we're gonna follow by putting that out Monday morning, and that should suffice what you're saying there.
Following that line of logic, what's to stop you from just refraining to put the information out just 20 minutes before the meeting or 10 seconds?
Because that would not be fair. The motion was made. We're trying to be fair. The motion was made Monday morning.
Yeah.
Monday morning by...
To give...
Statute says 9 o'clock.
9 o'clock.
By what?
So that's...
Statute's what, 9 o'clock?
I understand that that's a compromise. Nine and a half hours for what averages about 20 pages of materials? Yeah, it's, it's, it seems insufficient. You know, the quote is directly saying, just because it would be more convenient for you to not be, have five minutes taken out of your day because you're bothered by a concerned citizen, you know, that's, that's not good enough.
I'm not saying I would be bothered by that citizen. I would be saying that I don't have the information to provide a good answer to any question that that citizen would have. I'm not gonna say, don't bother me about this. I'm gonna say, I just don't have the information. I don't know what you're talking to.
I just don't see how that's a problem. I mean, if, if I was looking for information from a city official and they were unable to answer my question, I would gladly understand that and find a different person who at one point could answer my question.
Who's that person gonna be? Because at that point, nobody else should have the information.
In this...
Where are you gonna get that information? Who are you gonna call?
My hypothetical is having the information.
If I don't have that information, that means chances are the other city council members do not have that information. You can't ask them, so who are you gonna ask?
My point is that having the question before I have the answer is not a problem to me, and it should not be seen as a problem by the members of the city council.
If we provide that information by 9 o'clock Monday morning, I think that is very good. Okay. There, the gentleman in the back had his hand up first.
Since we're quoting the article a lot, it also says, Deputy Secretary of State Winters also said most boards distribute supporting material at the meeting itself. So he said this is very common practice.
You don't live here, why are you concerned?
Because I live in the Newport area, and I want the best for the Newport area. I'm not a second-back bench.
Okay, let's not get nitpicky on who's here and who's not here.
Can I make a comment on that? This is a public meeting. It doesn't make a difference which county it lives in.
So, yes, let's, right, now, okay, yeah, I'm gonna, since, oh, yes, go ahead.
I just wanna say thank you for the compromise and that motion, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, and I'm fully in support of it.
Real quick, and then we're gonna move on.
Yeah. You said earlier that you have the final decision in... Now, what if all four members of the council here voted on something, and you didn't like it? What would happen? Can you turn that down, or...
I can veto it, and then they would have to override it at the next meeting.
They can over, okay, all right, yeah. It just makes a little bit...
Three can override it.
Correct.
Three out of the four can override it.
Okay.
I'll make one comment.
Yes.
I see the problem of putting that information out on Tuesday or Wednesday. Once the thing's put out, everybody's got the agenda and the information. If something comes in reporting on Thursday and Friday, unless you wanna be amending that agenda two or three times on Thursday and Friday, then I think you do it on, put it Monday morning.
Good.
And that's basically what we're talking about.
Yes, okay, we have a motion and a second.
We got it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Information will be available at 9:00 a.m. Monday morning in the clerk treasurer's office.
Thank you to the city manager. And thank you to the clerk treasurer.
Any other...
Except on holidays.
Except on holidays? Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna have a clarification. Will it also be online?
That was the motion. That was, if I didn't say that, that was what I, I was assuming that. I apologize.
I've got it written down online.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for your studious notes.
Okay. Any other, any other new business?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We move to old business. Mr. Johnson? Is there a, oh, an old business?
No, not for me, thanks.
The only old business is, once again, I just wanna say that I think Wednesday's on the waterfront is still such a successful event. I mean, last week, I think it was one of the biggest crowds, and between the crowds on shore, it probably had, I'd say it probably had about 300, 350 people. So it's been really bringing people out, and it's been especially good for the businesses.
Restaurants have been full.
Restaurants have been full. That's all I have on the old business. Um, one thing on the new business, I forgot, the draft, downtown designation renewal application was submitted today. So they have the draft was sent down to my period today for that, so... Old business?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any old business? Anything, old? Okay. The next regularly scheduled council meeting will be August 21st, and then the centennial planning meeting will be August 17th. And now we need, we need the executive session?
Yes.
For the litigation? So we do need that executive session. I don't know if I dropped that motion with me again? Yes, I do, right there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that because the board's specific finding the premature general public knowledge of the subject of the anticipated executive session tonight will clearly place the board and the persons involved in substantial disadvantage. And I further move that we enter executive session with counsel for confidential attorney-client communications concerning contracts pending litigation.
So a motion is made, is there a second? Counsel is made and seconded. Discussion.
Are you expecting a decision this evening?
Boy, I don't know. I can't predict that. I wish I could. I'll have to email you.
But you would be kind enough to look and know if there is one? I appreciate that.
Please send an email following this.
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.